Tonight, we are celebrating a very special event. The Elizabeth Board of Education has entered into a long-term agreement with St. Patrick's Parish in Elizabeth. This agreement will enable our district to utilize the parish's facilities to add a new innovative K through 8th grade school to our district. The iPrep Academy School Number 8, scheduled to open in 2013, will provide one-to-one learning on iPads and MacBooks. Each student attending School Number 8 will receive a laptop or tablet to use during classroom instruction throughout the school day. The iPrep Academy School Number 8 will also participate in AVID, the Advancement Via Individual Determination Program. AVID is a research-based instructional model that encourages students to prepare for and participate in challenging college preparatory curriculum. The one-to-one learning program at School Aid will continue to emphasize the use of technology as a means of transforming education and preparing students for the 21st century workforce. The use of tablets such as iPads for classroom instruction has already been successfully implemented at the Johnny Dwyer Technology Academy. The new iPrep Academy will be the first elementary school to fully integrate one-to-one learning. We are grateful to the St. Patrick's Parish and the Archdiocese of Newark for making their facilities available to our district. Their partnership will help us in providing excellent educational services and opportunities for the children of Elizabeth. In celebration of this agreement, I would like to call forward Stephen Beloys, Executive Director of the Office of Property Management and Administration for the Newark Archdiocese, to join us for the ceremonial signing. I will now ask my fellow commissioners to sign copies of the lease. Thank you, Mr. Beloys. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. I just would like to say on behalf of Archbishop Myers that we're very excited to continue this partnership with the Elizabeth Board of Education. This, I believe, is the fourth school that we're at, and we're also most gratified that the building continues to be used for full-time educational use. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, would you please take us through the agenda?
Thank you. Approved minutes for the board meetings of August 16th and September 6th.
Approved the minutes? Approved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Upstate. Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Acceptance of the secretary's report for the month of July.
Accept the report, second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
2A Personnel Report.
Move the report, second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
2B Personnel Report.
Move the report, second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero. Upstate. Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
2C Supplemental Personnel Report.
Move the report, second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
3 Tuition Report.
Move the report, second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Padlo. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
4A Considerations.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pereira, second by Ms. Castilla. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo. Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
4B Use of Facilities.
I would like to move the report with 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, and 8 waivable fees. Number 4, ask recommended. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Trujillo. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
4C Request For Field Trips.
Move the report. Moved by Ms. Pereira, second by Mr. Padlo. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
4D Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Investigative Results.
Approved the report.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Pereira, second by Ms. Castilla. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. President, members of the board, members of the public, I'd like to report to you the excellent activities that have occurred in our schools since we last met. On September 7, 2012, the Elizabeth Public Schools welcomed thousands of students back to school. In preparation for opening day, team members worked diligently throughout the summer to ensure another successful school year. Schools were freshly painted, halls were decorated, and classrooms were equipped with the state-of-the-art technology and rigorous curriculum. Welcome back to School Number 6. Students at Toiseau de Victor, Marquise de Lafayette, School Number 6 had a chance to meet and greet, as well as take pictures with the school mascot on the first day. Students and team members of Ronald Reagan Academy School Number 30 were excited when they saw the school mascot, Ronnie the Stallion. He makes special appearances in classrooms to congratulate students and teachers when they achieve academic success. The success of the Advancement Via Individual Determination, AVID, program at Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy has officially been documented. The AVID National Organization has upgraded Hamilton status from AVID Affiliate Member to an AVID Certified Member. On August 22, 30 teachers representing kindergarten through 3rd grade from Robert Morris School Number 18 and Benjamin Franklin School Number 13 attended a workshop at School Number 18 entitled "Writing Workshop and the District Writing Calendar." Presenters Amberd, Palumbo, and Brenda Colony from School Number 27 presented a full interactive workshop on the philosophy and principles of writing workshop, the structure of the mini-lesson, and the detailed explanation of the district writing calendar. The Elizabeth High School varsity cheerleading team garnered several awards and honors at the National Cheerleaders Association Training Camp this summer. Under the direction of head coach Sandra Aristo and assistant coach Shamala Brooks-Minkins, the Elizabeth High School cheerleading team was selected as a national championship bid winner. This bid, which allows the Elizabeth High School to compete at the NCAA Senior and Junior High School National Championships in Dallas, Texas on January 12 and 13, 2013, is awarded to the team exemplifying superior technical skill and cheerleading technique. This is the first time the Elizabeth High School varsity cheerleaders have won a bid to go to the national competition. Mrs. Canton Malat, students at William Howland School Number 22 held a special fundraiser to benefit the March of Dimes this past summer. Robert Morris School Number 18 has adopted a free program provided by the New Jersey State Bar Association entitled "Bully Busting" for the 2012-2013 school year. Counselors and teachers will introduce the six lessons of the program to the students in order to promote a positive and peaceful environment. Children learn science best and understand scientific ideas better if they are able to investigate and experiment. Hands-on science can also help children think critically and gain confidence in their own ability to solve problems. The teachers of Dr. Antonio Pantoja School Number 27 know this and apply it. Over the summer, while students took time to re-energize, the teachers of Dr. Antonio Pantoja School Number 27 took part in the Mark Institute for Science Education, where they learned about the latest research-based exercises that will help enrich their science classes in the form. Two members of the Elizabeth Public Schools Cheerleading Team, varsity captains Senior Chastine Cologne of Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy and Senior Kajona Smallwood of Emerald William F. Halsey Junior Leadership Academy, made the All-American Cheerleading Team. Elizabeth High School Varsity had the distinction of being the only team to have 75% of their cheerleaders nominated for individual honors. Fifteen of the 20-member team were named All-American nominees at the National Cheerleading Association Camp, allowing them to try out for the All-American Team. The nomination is for the outstanding athletes who jumped, who displayed strength in one of the following categories: motions, jumps, stunts, tumbling, dance, or leadership. The two Elizabeth High School All-American Cheerleaders, Cologne and Smallwood, have been invited to perform in London, England, December 26 through January 2. Trooper Youth Week. A few miles down the road at the Jersey Shore, people were relaxing in the sun and surf, but not two Halsey Leadership Academy's finest, Jennifer Lozano and Marie Lisha Santiago. These two students were working hard qualifying for the week of rigor at this year's Trooper Youth Week. They were up at dawn, marching, exercising, drilling, and experiencing the life of a typical state trooper recruit. Jennifer Lozano won this year's Top Physical Challenge Award for the highest fitness score of any female junior trooper. This is the second year in a row the award has been earned by an Elizabeth Public School student. Members of the board, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Kennedy?
Tab 4 CC Supplemental Field Trips.
Move the tab. Second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate. Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Tab number 5 Authorization Report.
Move the report. Moved by Mr. Pereira, second by Mr. Padlo. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo. Nazca.
Yes.
5A Supplemental Authorization Report.
Move the report.
Second. Moved by Ms. Castilla, second by Mr. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes, with an abstention on page 2.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo. Nazca.
Yes.
Tab number 6 Finance and Accounting Report.
The report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Castilla. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Upstate.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Upstate.
Nazca.
Yes.
6A Transfer Of Funds.
Transfer the funds.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Castilla, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Upstate.
Nazca.
Yes.
7 Award Of Contracts.
Award Of Contracts?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Munn. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo. Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo. Nazca.
Yes.
7A Supplemental Award Of Contracts.
The report.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Castilla. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
7B Second Supplemental Award Of Contracts Report.
The report, second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Upstate.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo. Nazca.
Yes.
Tab 8 Misaligned Communications. There are none. Tab 9 Claims List.
What is the pleasure of the board? Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Castilla. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero.
Upstate.
Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes, with an abstention on page 11.
Pereira.
Yes, with abstention on page 50.
Trujillo.
Upstate.
Nazca.
Yes.
Mr. De Nosa, will you read Resolution 10, please?
My pleasure, Mr. President. Board of Education Resolution, Christopher Columbus Day. Whereas over 500 years ago, Christopher Columbus bravely embarked on a journey west across the Atlantic Ocean in search of a sea route to the eastern stretches of Asia. And whereas, with the support of Queen Isabella of Spain, Columbus's three vessels, the Nina, the Pinta, and the Santa Maria, followed a route that he mapped. And whereas, Columbus and his crew of 90 endured an arduous journey of 33 days before reaching the New World on October 12, 1492. And whereas, history remembers Christopher Columbus as an outstanding navigator and as an organizer of expeditions. And whereas, a Columbus Day celebration was first held in 1792, and in 1971, Columbus Day became a legal federal holiday now celebrated on a second Monday in October. And whereas, the Elizabeth Board of Education recognizes the courage, bravery, and spirit of adventure that Christopher Columbus demonstrated as an explorer and as a navigator. Now, therefore, be it resolved that during the month of October, appropriate studies, activities, and displays be planned in all of our district schools to remember and honor Christopher Columbus, a man whose spirit and determination truly changed man's vision of his world. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all principals and school librarians in the Elizabeth Public Schools. I move the resolution.
Second. Moved by Mr. De Nosa, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? Seeing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero. Castilla.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez, will you read 10A, please?
My pleasure. National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas, people with disabilities have throughout history of this country made remarkable contributions to countless fields of endeavor, including medicine, education, the arts, journalism, government service, and science. And whereas, this year marked the 60th anniversary of the American with Disabilities Act and the 30th anniversary of the Individual with Disability Education Act. Two landmark pieces of legislation that transform our country's disability policy and set a standard for other nations of the world. And whereas, in the United States of America, we define ourselves in many ways, not only by our families and communities, but also by our work. And whereas, it is incumbent upon all of us as employers, employees, educators, and especially as fellow humans, to recognize and tap into the enormous potential of individuals with disabilities and to do everything possible to integrate Americans with disabilities into this country's working force. And whereas, it is especially important that all students with disabilities in the Elizabeth Public Schools are given all of the help they need to master the skills they must have to successfully seek gainful and rewarding employment. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Elizabeth Board of Education joins with the President of the United States in designated October 2012 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Ability You Can Bank Up. Be it further resolved that teachers in all our schools plan activities and programs that will bring about awareness of the fact that people with disabilities are ready, willing, and able to contribute to the growth and development of this nation and should be given every opportunity to do so. I do so. Move this resolution.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Castilla. Any questions or comments? Hearing and roll call, Mr. Kennedy.
Montero. De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.[1738.56] Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Mr. Padlo, will you please read Ten B?
Board of Education Resolution, Italian-American Heritage Month. Whereas, Italians and Italian-Americans have made great contributions to America's society economically, culturally, and politically. And whereas, Italian-Americans have won prestigious prizes such as the Nobel Prize, the Prisker Award for Architecture, and the Fields Medal for Mathematics. And whereas, Italians and Italian-Americans invented pianos, violins, calendars, radios, telescopes, uh, compresses, microscopes, thermometers, eyeglasses, steam engines, typewriters, and batteries. And whereas, Italian-Americans have toiled and labored while helping to build our nation's infrastructure, including railroads, tunnels, highways, and subways. And whereas, the Elizabeth Board of Education recognizes that it is within this whole community that pride in our nation's history and an appreciation for the experience, oh, sorry, experiences and contributions of men and women of all racial, religious, and ethnic groups are developed. Now, therefore be it resolved that the month of October two thousand and twelve be designated as Italian-American Heritage Month to promote awareness of the valuable contributions of Italian-Americans, past and present, to all aspects of American life. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all of our schools and librarians in the Elizabeth Public Schools to encourage the development of programs, activities, and displays in recognition of the important role Italian-American men and women have played in the birth, growth, and development of our country. Move to pass the resolution.
Second. Moved by Mr. Padlo, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, Pauline Kennedy.
Montero.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Mr. Pereira, will you please read Ten C?
Board of Education Resolution, Week of Respect. Whereas, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, Assembly Bill Three, Four, Six, Six, was approved by the New Jersey Legislature in November two thousand and ten and signed into law as PL two thousand and ten, C one twenty-two, by Government Chris Christie on January fifth, two thousand and eleven. And whereas, the statute is intended to protect students from harassment and intimidation and would substantially interfere with their education. And whereas, in a two thousand and nine survey by the National Centers for Disease Control, one in five New Jersey students indicated they had been the subject of bullying on school grounds during the previous year. And whereas, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights places expanded responsibilities on teachers, school administrators, and Board of Educations to protect students from incidents of bullying, harassment, and intimidation. And whereas, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights designates the week, beginning with the first Monday in October, as Week of Respect throughout New Jersey. And whereas, the law directs school districts to observe the Week of Respect through age-appropriate instruction in accordance with New Jersey's core curriculum content standards. And whereas, the Elizabeth Board of Education recognizes the harmful impact of harassment and bullying on children and is committed to providing all of its students with warm, safe learning environments free from intimidation. And whereas, the Elizabeth Board of Education supports the intent of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights to protect our children, as well as the goal of previous law to enhance training and instruction to prevent harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Now therefore be it resolved that the Elizabeth Board of Education declares October first through fifth, two thousand and twelve, as a Week of Respect in all district schools. Be it further resolved that the Week of Respect will be a part of the Elizabeth Public Schools' ongoing efforts to foster respect among students and staff for the diverse cultures and personalities represented in our school community. And that the resolution be spread on the official agenda of the Elizabeth Board of Education. I move this resolution.
Second. Moved by Mr. Pereira, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, Pauline Kennedy.
Montero.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
This is second reading of the revised regulation and policy, free or reduced-price lunches and milk, file code three, five, four, two, point three, one, and gangs and gang-related activity, policy, file code five, one, three, one, point two, and a resolution for adoption.
Move the resolution. Second. Moved by Mr. Pereira, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, if I may, Mr. Trujillo. I, uh, I'm gonna ask that my colleagues support this resolution, um, especially the gangs and gang-related activities. As we're all aware, unfortunate gangs are a reality in urban districts as Elizabeth. And although they're ignored often by others, who for their own political reasons decide to ignore it, uh, it is the responsibility of this board to protect our children, to be aware, to make the public aware that this problem does exist. And I think, uh, having a policy that addresses the problem, gets us in front of it, and, uh, and can really protect, and probably down the line, even perhaps save a child's life from joining a gang. Um, I think it's important that we, uh, we continue to, uh, to focus on gang awareness. As, uh, my colleague, Mr. Francis Gonzalez, said today, these uniforms, now that we have all our children in school uniforms, one of the benefits of that is having, um, awareness that these, uh, children are our children when they're in school, that we can recognize who they are. And, um, and this avoids the gang initiations and associations and affiliations that comes with gang activity. So I, I ask that we all support this, and we send a clear message to the citizens of Elizabeth that we are committed to protecting our children from gangs in the great city of Elizabeth.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd just jump on that, uh, on the words of Mr. Trujillo. Uh, I can't tell you how many parents I've spoken to in the last several months from, um, throughout the city of Elizabeth that have actually been moving back to the city of Elizabeth from surrounding towns from Linden and Roselle and Hillside because of the school uniforms, and because their particular towns are now having, uh, problems with gangs. So I think it's a remarkable achievement and accomplishment, and the accolades at the city of Elizabeth, that you have people from other towns and surrounding towns now moving back to the city of Elizabeth because of the progress and success here of the uniforms and the policies of the Elizabeth Board of Education.
Any further comments? Roll, Pauline Kennedy.
Montero.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Ms. Castillo, will you read, please read Ten E?
Board of Education Resolution, School Violence Awareness Week. Where school safety is always a top priority of educational officials, and where promoting school safety is one of the utmost importance to all, and where schools must be safe places for students can learn and grow without fear of violence, and where, and, uh, and age-appropriate opportunities and programs are provided for students, including discussions on conflict resolution, issues of student's diversity and tolerance, and where schools provide opportunities for students, parents, and school district, and law enforcement personnel to discuss methods for preventing school violence and vandalism. Now, therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board, the Elizabeth Board of Education, hereby proclaim the week October fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, as School Violence Awareness Week. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all school principals and library specialists, media specialists in the Elizabeth Public Schools to encourage the observance of this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. So I do move this resolution as a social worker.
Second. Moved by Ms. Castillo, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, if I may.
Mr. Trujillo.
In talking with, uh, with Commissioner Padlo, uh, early on after his appointment, um, we're starting to build consensus on this board that we can do more on security. And, uh, Mr. Padlo had some great ideas, and we're working on those. And, um, hopefully soon we could, uh, could have something that we're gonna roll out, uh, if, with the board's support. But, uh, security is so important. It is such an important issue that, um, that we provide a safe environment, not only for our children to learn, but for our teachers to teach. It's important that we keep the staff and the children safe. Um, in order to do that, we need to have a community outreach. The community has to buy into this. Um, our students walk the streets all the time on the way home, on the way to school, and, uh, it's important that we keep them safe. So, uh, hopefully if this initiative kicks off, the idea would be to get the community involved, uh, to say something when they see something. Um, it, it's not a new model. It's something that's been used, uh, since nine eleven. Uh, and we think that perhaps it'd be a good avenue to, um, to get it into the, the, the local businesses and, and the community at large. It's important that we get community buy-in to safety in the initiatives in the school. This is one way that they can participate, um, in keeping our kids safe from the harms that are the urban streets. It's unfortunate, we, we, you know, we often, we forget that we do live in an urban setting, and it's, it's a big city with a lot of people who come through and not always have the best intentions for our children. You know, it's, it's all our responsibility, not just these board members, not just the parent, the community as a whole. So hopefully, if, uh, we can, um, we can build on Mr. Padlo's vision of, 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 of bringing out the support, um, for more security and awareness of security. If you visit our facilities, you can see that we have a, a, a great support, uh, from our security guards. They're well-trained. They're often trained. And they, they diffuse a lot of stuff, um, that, that could potentially happen and bring harm, uh, to our children and to our staff. We, we've invested, uh, a lot of resources in security. We've, uh, there, there, there are capital improvements in the works for, for security, adding cameras, um, throughout our, our district. These are important things. We've bought equipment. We've bought cars. Um, if you haven't seen them, they're, they're great, these little electric cars. They use them around the high school to get around. And, and it's making our school district safer. But we have to create awareness among the community that this is a real threat. When our children leave our schools, or they're on our way to school, or our way to a program, they are at risk sometimes. And we can all chip in by keeping an eye out for them. And if we see something, um, we have an obligation as citizens to say something and keep them safe. So hopefully, uh, once this kicks off, the board, and it's presented to the whole board, um, we can gather support. But I think it's, it's, it's a great initiative, and, and, and I'm gonna start lobbying for support early for this. Um, hopefully soon, we'll, we'll have something to present to the whole board and, and move forward on it.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Any other comments? Roll, Pauline Kennedy.
Montero.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira. Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Ten F, Requisition for Taxes.
The resolution. Second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, Pauline Kennedy.
Montero.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Resolution Ten Eight, Revised New Jersey Non-Public School Technology Program.
The resolution. Second. Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, Pauline Kennedy.
Montero.
Yes.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
At this time, the microphones are open, public comment for those who have signed in prior to this session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to sixty minutes. No individual is able to yield their name to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Time limits will strictly be enforced. No personal attacks on individuals, no vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from the, from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. I'd like to call Isaac Barnes, ten fifty-three North Avenue. Iris Flores, forty-five Ravlag Manor. Iris Flores. Maria Maderos, three twenty-four Franklin Street. Maria Maderos, three twenty-four Franklin Street. Jose Rodriguez, six eighteen Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Rodriguez.
I just wanna start out and say welcome back to all the staff members and the students, uh, to back to school. It's always an exciting time for all of us. Um, since we last spoke, uh, again, you know, something exciting happened at the Elizabeth Board of Education, not in a actually positive way, but we had the resignation due to, uh, certain issues of voter, uh, it's under investigation, but they, they may say it's voter fraud, so on and so forth. Um, you know, if, if, if this was a show, it would get high ratings. You know, there's been three resignations in the past year. There's a board member under indictment, uh, that's currently still there. Um, you know, this, I, I don't know if this is a joke for you guys or not, because I, obviously you guys know, and I'm running and so on and so forth, but it's very serious. You know, you're entrusted with the students here in Elizabeth. One out of six people that live in Elizabeth actually go to our schools. Um, also, there's current members on the Elizabeth Board of Education that consistently run for other positions outside of the Board of Education. Uh, there's been members who run for Assembly, uh, one that currently got installed today, uh, Assemblyman. Um, Ms. Castillo has run, uh, for Freeholder.
Mr. Rodriguez, please refrain from using anyone's name.
Excuse me. Another member has run for, uh, Freeholder a couple times. Uh, another member, or multiple members have run for Council. I mean, I don't know if this, if, if you got, you know, if you guys use this as a springboard for other political motivations, but, you know, this, this is a board of education, you know, the, the students matter. This should be where you stay. It shouldn't be that, you know, I come in in a resignation, I leave two years later, I run for something the next year, you know, I, I, I don't know, I don't know what, uh, you know, what's going on here. Um, like I said, this is a serious job, and, uh, you know, hopefully in November, you know, Elizabeth will speak and, uh, and put some people in that, you know, that truly care. So, um, thank you.
Next, I'll call Patricia Galanti.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Munoz.
Good evening.
I'm Pati Galant, seven fifty Grove Avenue, Elizabeth, New Jersey, taxpayer, concerned citizen, and a leader in the Elizabeth Education Organization, a committee, um, a chapter of the statewide education organizing committee. The Elizabeth Education Organizing Committee has come before this board a number of times to voice our concern regarding public participation. We have already presented the board with four hundred and forty-one signatures. Tonight, we have thirty-three more to give you. The petition requests that the school board only conduct the business of the board, which is educational policy, during its monthly meetings, and that public participation occur before the business portion of the meeting and no later than seven thirty, as other governing bodies in our area do. The showcasing of our students' talents and the presentation of awards should be on a different day to show how special those students really are. There's a book out called Education and the Making of a Democratic People, which emphasizes how school boards can engage the public, school boards can serve as an example of democracy in action, and why it's the school's responsibility to teach students about democracy in ways that are tangible and meaningful. The Code of Ethics for School Board Members, eighteen A, twelve dash twenty-four, also notes the importance of community participation. The Act states, "As board members, you will confine your board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them." has consulted those who will be affected by them." The federal government also recognizes the importance of community involvement in the Elementary, Secondary, and Education Act, which requires that every Title I school have a written parent involvement policy developed with the approval of the parents, that every Title I school have a school-parent compact, that every Title I school district must have a written Title I parent involvement policy that is developed with and approved by parents and evaluated every year. Having said that, it is crucial that this body create a new policy for public participation and establish a new procedure to address the issues of the people you were elected to represent.
Thank you for your comments. Next I'm going to call Pia Carbajal, 19D Hart Place.
Good evening. Welcome, Mr. Bartero. This evening I'd like to talk about Selecting New Children. I'd like to thank you for the effort to work with Pennsylvania, with Dr. Chupin Bloom. There has been, you know, negotiations, I'd like to say, to see if they could do a workshop for the teachers. I'd like to say, having a child with learning disability is sad, but the child talks. Having a child that cannot walk is sad too, but a child could move and talk with a wheelchair. Having a child that cannot talk is very sad, it's very frustrating. And the teachers right now in the whole district are working very hard, and if you think about the parent trying to work with the child every morning, taking him to school, telling him, "You're going to read for the teacher for science, you're going to read for math, you're going to do this, you're going to do that." Just imagine the teacher trying to, you know, to work with this particular child having twenty more in the classroom. Yes, there is support, there is help, there is, you know, the child study team, but I still consider to educate everybody more. I'm not insulting anybody, but myself, I still need to learn more about what is a Selecting New Child. I do get frustrated. Even Irena has improved so much, but I still, I'd like to say, if there is Selecting New Children, if there is children with difficulties in the area of speech, let's try to improve that, let's try to educate ourselves, how could we help this child to communicate? How could we educate more the parent? Let's not just put the pressure on the teacher. The first day of school, I said to the teacher, "Good morning, my name is Pia Carbajal, this is Irena Riano. Irena would write to you. Irena has to find a way to communicate with you," and I draw the line, she has to do it. So Irena is writing right now. However, parents need to know more about what they have, not just drop their children by the school and pretend that everybody is going to do everything for them. We have the YMCA, I know that watch your children while you're working, but you know, I don't know, some children are being picked up at seven or eight, which I don't know, I don't know. I'm thinking, I mean, I've been working seven days, but your child goes first in so many ways. I'd like to thank you for trying to help, you know, especially my child, Irena Riano, and special needs, St. Joseph's Pathing School Number Four, and helping our PTO, our Parent-Tutor Organization, which is going to work harder than other years, because we need parents, we need people that wants to give solutions. When I see a problem, I say to my, even to my husband and my child, beginning by home, "I don't want to talk about a problem, I want solutions. I want to know how we could improve this." If I keep talking about a problem, we're going to be looking at the problem the whole time, and we're going to waste time. So I like...
This is Carbajal, can you please wrap up your comments?
Yes. So I'd like to thank you for looking for solutions, and I hope we could work more this new school year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to extend the courtesy and call the names again of the people that missed, if they're still here, if they'd like to address the Board. Isaac Barnes.
I object, Mr. President. I object, that, I apologize, but I don't think that's fair to those who were here when they were called. The policy exists to create an orderly fashion for people to speak. We were just criticized on our policy. I think we, I remember that policy passing 9-0. I think we just should adhere to the policy. The names were called, ample opportunity was given, and if they missed their time, well, so be it. There'll be another Board meeting next month.
Does anyone agree with Commissioner Trujillo?
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Rafael Fajardo, I reside in the city of Elizabeth, 131 Palisade Road. I'd like to say hello to all the Board of Education members, to the superintendent, the tremendous staff that we are blessed to have in the city of Elizabeth, that are doing such a great job for the children of the city of Elizabeth. I educated my children in this city, and all of my children have been very successful. School are 50% of the job that has to get done. The other 50% belongs to the help and the support that you give to the students at home. We try to do everything that we can in the Board of Education to help our children, but parents must have a responsibility to the children and to the taxpayers to get the job done. I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Montero. Tony, we served together up there. It was exciting, because of all of the great things that we were able to do for this district. I know that working along with the superintendent and the rest of the members of the Board of Education and the staff, we have a lion, another lion, that will defend the children of the city of Elizabeth and the taxpayers. So I congratulate you, I congratulate all the members of the Board of Education. Don't let, don't let those who come here, detractors that come to the Board of Education, try to tear you down. What other city in the state of New Jersey has built as many schools that we have in the city of Elizabeth? Tonight, you sign opening another new school. School 21 is going to open soon, School 25 opened, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 50, 51, 52, St. Patrick's, St. Howard's, St. Edward's, St. Catholic. What other city can say that? And what does that mean? Better educational opportunity for the children of the city of Elizabeth. Smaller class sizes, improvement, and that's how we have become the number one urban school district in the state of New Jersey. So those that want, come here, that want to be, learn your lesson first, have children, and become responsible parents. Once you do that, then you can perhaps run for the Board of Education. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your comments. A motion was made by Mr. Trujillo to close the public portion of the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr....
Mr. President, if I may, just for the sake of courtesy, and I understand Mr. Trujillo's point, and I concur, but I think, for the sake of transparency, and for the sake that the, I think the one individual's name that you may have called first may have been in the bathroom, so I think we'd extend him the courtesy, and I concur with Mr. Commissioner Trujillo that in the future we adhere to the policies of the Board, but I think in particular that the young man was in the bathroom, I think if we extend...
But again, I got out of the bathroom, but I'm waiting out of courtesy to listen to the public, so, you know, that's, you know, they knew that the public session was coming. And that's my...
Isaac Barnes. He's in the bathroom again?
He was not in the bathroom.
Oh, he wasn't in the bathroom, so he did not, he did not, he did not...
Okay, let's move on.
And I think we make the vote, and I second the motion too. He was not in the bathroom.
So he was not in the bathroom, so therefore...
Mr. President, point of order, please, there was a motion on the table.
There is a motion on the table. Mr. Kennedy.
He's a child, he's a stupid, he doesn't have a right, he doesn't have a right.
The President requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under Open Public Meetings Act, specifically for discussion of personnel, contracts, and legal matters. The Board will reconvene the public and may take form of election.
Motion to go into private.
Circuit. Motion made by Ms. Munn, second by Mr. Trujillo. Any questions or comments? Hearing non-roll call Ms. Kennedy.
Montero.
Aye.
Yes.
Castillo.
Denosa. Aye.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
We are now in private.